...the order and stand for pledge.
I put the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, amendments to the agenda.
I did have one that the board is agreeable. Green Mountain, Green Lantern Solar sent me some paperwork a little late and they were, they're requesting the board to sign a preferred site letter like the other two that have come through.
So we'll do that in new business. And more than that?
No, actually, yeah, Green Mountain, our Green Lantern Solar, who are new business at that.
Second.
Second.
Follow up in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Any other amendments? All right. Approval of minutes of February 11th.
Well, if you approve the minutes of February 11th, 2020.
I'll second, there's two corrections.
Okay.
On page two and page three, it should be post forty-nine. Which one for you?
I knew that too, I just got.
We'll get over.
Post forty-nine?
Post forty-nine. You got one forty-nine. Anything else? Follow up in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have two water bill questions. Mr. Gay, the first one's, you're up. Do you want to, do you want to, I'm not sure if you want to do this.
I can give you an overview and then Mr. Gay can fill in the blanks, I guess. So, Mr. Gay. Um, Mr. Gay's saying that his water bill, billed on eleven five, twenty nineteen, if I'm correct, was too high. He's requesting water credit. So we looked, he spoke with Bev and he spoke with myself. We reviewed his water bill. And to be honest with you, you couldn't ask for a more clear and consistent water bill. The bills are consistent across all quarters, all years, and both, both meters. I denied his request because there was no, there was no support, there was no data or support saying that there was an error in billing.
So, saying that, that he has of one quarter, let's see, the following year, it was twenty-seven thousand gallons. Previous year. We were thirty thousand supposedly on that quarter in gallon usage. On the previous year, in that same quarter, it was twenty-seven. Go back the phone and seventeen, it was thirty. Then you go back to sixteen, it was only twenty. And it was twenty-three and twenty-three. The highest water bill I've ever had in this town was just four hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then it went to six hundred and twenty-five dollars this quarter. I did go in and Bev did find on the twenty-fifth of November, around one o'clock, it showed a usage of four thousand gallons in an hour. I had Michael Duke from the water come up. He took, unhooked the meter for two hours, two hours and a half. I explained to him that Paul McClure had been there, he's coming back, and that if you have, if you have a leak in your house, if you set the meter, if you shut your water off for a period of approximately two hours or more, when you hook it up, if you have a leak, you're, when you turn the water on from the town, you'll get a surge of water because the pressure in the system will drop.
Right.
So, it did not do that one. I did it twice before Mike came. And then Mike came, he completely unhucked the meter on one end, showed clear, he left for two and a half hours, came back, he hooked it up, there was no drop in pressure, he stayed there for about twenty minutes and the meter didn't turn. So he said, you don't have a leak, which Paul McClure came in afterwards again and double-checked everything. So, I don't, with the usage, I don't, I don't see, I don't see how it could go to six hundred and twenty-five dollars, three people, from four twenty-five, it's the highest bill.
I don't, it's just me, but four thousand gallons in an hour, we have a half inch line coming into the house, it would have looked like a swimming pool in our house.
And that's what looks like.
I mean, there'd been water everywhere, it wouldn't be a little bit of a puddle, it would have been a blowout, we'd have every construction crew in the town there. It doesn't make any sense, four thousand gallons in an hour.
And Mike said, you've been raining everything for a whole day, you only get a half inch line coming in. You know, there's no way, if you ran all the faucets, in probably twenty-four hours, you couldn't use four thousand with a half inch line, so.
Something is wrong in the system. I don't know if it's a computer glitch, I don't know, I mean, if you talk to Paul, he'll tell you that Stratton Mountain had the same system, they got rid of it because it was ridiculous. Maybe it should be looked at, the computer system that runs this whole thing has a little issue.
Paul was explaining that would happen in Stratton Mountain, saying it's happened here in the same one. Why they took theirs out was because if you had an influx in pressure to a system or a drop in pressure, it would show a graph. And people down there were complaining so bad that their water bills went up, if they had a pressure increase, it would shoot the meter up, so.
I have a question too that, and I don't know, you'd have to look at everybody that's having this kind of issue, but we are on the very end of the line that comes in from Conarven Street. Our house is the end of that line. My cousin Sherri lives next door, she comes in from.
Fourth.
Fourth Street. And theirs is a new line, ours is a very, very old line. Are all the people in town that are having trouble with bad water bills on the end of an old line coming in off Big Main?
Don't know. It's a pretty good question. Don't know.
Because it's not just us.
It still wouldn't read in your, even if there was a leak somewhere in that line, it wouldn't show up on your bill.
No, but what Paul was saying is it's showing the pressure surge.
If there's a pressure surge.
If there's a pressure surge, it's getting up, it's, it's just dinging on a meter. And it might not be every meter on our street.
I don't believe those meters are set up that way.
Is this a new meter?
This is a new meter, yeah.
Did you have a problem before with your old meter?
No, and we have not changed any of the other meters.
The highest bill we ever had, even on the old meter, even whatever the gallon was, is four hundred and twenty-five dollars. This one right here, this quarter, seven cents, says four fifty.
So the old meter, last year, so this year, right at thirty. The old meter, which we didn't have any problems with, right at twenty-seven. And the year before that, which is the old meter, which we didn't have any problems with, right at thirty as well.
And then the two years.
It's, it's been very, I don't, I don't know what happened in the household four years ago. But it's very, very consistent over time.
Actually, it's only been high since two thousand seventeen.
Right.
It was twenty, twenty-three, if you could go back before that, it was around twenty thousand gallons then too.
Yeah.
Twenty-six, twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty-five, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-six.
Right, but it's not.
It is high consumption.
Yeah. And it's huge. And it's huge for three people, you know?
It's not like we have a family of five.
I know Mrs. Hughes called me the other day, and she's eighty-three years old, and she said, Rick, she goes, I have, I got a water bill the other day, or, and it was four hundred and two dollars. She goes, my highest water bill I ever was, two hundred and two, just Mr. and Mrs. Hughes. So, how's, two people, eighty-three, have four hundred and something dollar water bills? I'm just saying that something doesn't seem right here.
Just maybe if you could look into the system. I guess that's my, if you've got a bunch of older people in town that are also having trouble on a fixed income, you're asking for a water treatment plant, I mean, come on!
No, we're on the other level.
Right, and that's what I'm saying to you, we're gonna, we're gonna have mass exodus of town of people that are paying taxes.
And how can, how can, say if we just.
Because they can't afford to live here.
Even if you go back to this thirty thousand usage, if my water bill was, it used to be three fifty, and the highest one ever was four in a quarter until this, these last, how can it go from four in a quarter, the highest ever, to six hundred and twenty-five? On same usage. I mean, the water hasn't gone up that much in a year or two, hasn't gone up two hundred dollars. And then this water bill just came out with four fifty. I don't wash cars, we don't wash our lawn, we've washed a car or two before, but China go to Alvin's Toyota with himself.
But the thing with these meters, it's reading, it's reading the tenths, tenths of a gallon. The old meters would, like, you'd go through a gallon of water and it might not read it all, but these new meters are reading it right, right to the drop.
Yeah, I didn't notice they have tenths on it.
And that's where you've, that's where everybody's finding that the bills are going up because, because of that. I mean, if you've got a drippy faucet, it's reading that.
Yeah, we don't have any, we have everything checked and.
I know, I'm just saying, that's.
Right, I know, but. Three people, six twenty-five, that's crazy.
That's how fine these, these meters are. I mean, I don't know why it's white, but.
Are we in the same line as you, because ours went up too?
I know, every, I, trust me, I hear it a lot.
Quite, quite a bit.
Did it?
Four hundred, but we never had one over two, you know?
You're in the board?
They're in the board. How much is actual? Seeing increase in cost. I know, but four hundred, two hundred, no, over two hundred.
No, I only did usage because consumption.
So you should.
Yeah, in past, yeah, in past years, the cost per gallon might be different, so it skews your numbers.
Right.
So in, in twenty-seven, yeah, consumption is constant. In twenty seventeen, the value of water was lower, the cost of water was lower. It did say, it was the same cost in nineteen, it does now though. Does that mean the dentist will question?
Yeah.
Did you hear that question? You want to add?
I was, I was just asking what the difference in the price of water was between the two.
Oh.
And he's saying they were the same.
This year and last year, the price of water did not go up.
So it should all be in the consumption side of the formula?
Right.
I was just seeing if, between four hundred and six hundred, if any of that could be justified with price.
Right.
That's all. Some of these cases, I'm not trying to bring everybody else in the, if they're talking about my bill, but if hers is doubled, Terrence Buxton's lost two kids out of her household, two last, hers went to five something, Mrs. Hughes's goes to four something from two hundred, there's gotta be a problem, really. You can't.
I don't know that there's a problem, I don't know, I think we're reading more accurately, but.
You're saying I'm gonna be wrong here then?
The question, the question I need to get answered is, is it accurately across the board? Are we getting an average rise in price? And I don't know, I don't know that, do you know that, Bev, by any chance?
I don't understand your question.
Is there, if we're reading more accurately, is there more, is there, or, an average rise in price, like, is there a ten percent rise, or is there a?
It's hard to say because a lot of the meters were very old, the old ones, and the older they are, the slower they tend to run. They don't speed up, they slow down, and then they ultimately stop. So, there's so many factors that can come into it. If they had an older meter, older style meter, but it was a brand-new older style meter, it should be reading the same.
So to your, to the question, we did do a review on the first batch that went in, and we did see a slight increase, but overall, some went up and some, some homes went up and some homes went down. What we expect to find is just kind of a regular distribution of prices where it, the curve is expected to be flat. I don't, I don't expect to see huge jumps, some people have paid more, some people have paid less, but overall, I don't think we'll see a large, and the initial data kind of, it points us in that direction.
I mean, they're going up a third. So.
Especially if there's no, okay, so I'll go back to your, there's no rise in price per gallon, is what you're saying, from two thousand, in two thousand nineteen, so for the last year. So to have four hundred and something dollars to six hundred and something dollars with no rise in price.
And the same consumption.
With the same consumption, is kind of a big deal. When you, I mean, if you're talking about, you're talking about a growing population of old people in this town.
You double-checked the math.
The math is good. It's all computerized.
It's just an easy question.
I know.
I don't think the math is good.
It's not my favorite.
But you see what I'm saying, if you, say you, say you, we ran with the numbers of thirty thousand gallons for those quarters before, why is my bill all the way to six twenty-five and never, ever exceeded four in a quarter? If it says the price isn't any different, how does that? Well, I'd like to know where the math is, I, please show it to me, because I'm pretty good at math. I don't know what you're saying.
I don't know, I can't.
Did the sewer tax?
Not two hundred dollars?
We did see a slight increase in sewer. There wasn't.
Are you talking, just the water part of the bill?
The bill.
So sewer did go up? So there was a little bit of that.
Sewer, I think, went up like two ounces of change. I'd have to, don't quote me on that.
Per gallon?
Yes, for a dollar.
Well, for a thousand.
For a thousand, right.
Yeah, we did see an increase in sewer.
Which, like, it should have been like twenty dollars, I had my math right before, it was like, on a bell. Okay. Well, can we reach out to Wayne Elliott and just ask those questions about the pressure increase driving higher meter readings?
I can reach out to the company too and see.
Yeah.
But we gotta get this solved, I mean, there's, this is.
I mean, that's a valid question, that we don't have the answer to.
We can't, we can't give them an answer unless we know what's happening, what's going on here. If there's a situation where the, where the pressure was making a difference in the meters, we have to know if that's probably, probably.
When did that, four thousand gallons show up? What's that date?
November twenty-fifth, about one o'clock.
AM, PM?
Uh, one o'clock, afternoon.
As I told Rich though, when we saw it, it was the new program, we still weren't sure how to use it, how to read the information. So whether that meant four point zero 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 or four thousand, we have no idea because this new program didn't come with a.
Everybody should.
Ready for dummies.
Everybody should already have it read if you're gonna implement a system, you should know what you're doing if you're gonna implement any system.
Well, we've got, well, there's always, there's always.
It shouldn't be a trial by error.
But, well.
No, it shouldn't. As long as you don't mind paying your bill downwind.
Well, it should be, but it also means that there will be, and we'll, we'll have to get it fixed, or we have questions we have to ask. In the meantime, let's, I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels, but let's get those questions asked and then revisit their bill after we get an answer that, one way or the other. I mean, there are some arguments on both sides here, you guys obviously have a legitimate argument there, but you do have some usage that was in that area. Now the question is, how did we get to another couple hundred bucks? And if it could have possibly been a pressure anomaly, whatever that would be. The middle of the day.
Nobody's home. Today.
Well, I, I don't know, I'm wondering, you know, there's schools there, I don't know, I just don't know if there's, if there's a lot of drop in the schools, I really don't know that answer and I don't wanna, I just wanted to ask all those questions.
On this, it shows that there was no reading for July.
So I thought the same thing when I read this one.
So this thirty, this thirty thousand, from April thirtieth.
I wondered about that too.
That's, is that correct? Is that something that, I said that, Pam, is that a correct thing that they went from four?
Ten, two, twenty nineteen, there's zero reading.
Probably zero in the whole month.
Is that everybody in town?
I got, I got a zero on mine.
If there was a meter replacement, then you'll see a zero sitting there because they couldn't read the meter, but.
So what happened to the water usage from?
Right, is that?
April, April through July.
I had, I wanted, I didn't just see, I'm not gonna answer.
She'll manually enter it.
We wondered that, is that, does that mean that there wasn't a bill for that time, or?
When was your meter put in, in July, wasn't it?
I don't know, probably, he came around the guy.
Okay, so you hadn't yet used a thousand, a thousand gallons on the new meter, so on your bill, you would have noticed that it had a T adjustment, water usage, sewer usage, that was manually entered based on the information that the water department gave you.
Okay, but we would have gotten a bill for, I mean, it's not like.
You would have gotten a bill.
Right, and we would have paid it, so it's not like they're like a nonbill.
Well, so, okay, so it wouldn't have been.
It's just showing that they hadn't used. No, it was just showing that they hadn't used a thousand gallons yet on your new meter.
So we have, we have some questions. I think we need to get those questions answered.
We can't give an answer if you don't know.
We can't.
All right.
We're not going to penalize you while we figure this out, obviously. And we'll, we'll go from there, we'll get, we'll get some answers and we'll call you back. Or, we'll have some answers and we won't have to call you back. One way or the other, we'll, we'll get some more into it more, but we'll ask the company what the possibilities are. So we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Make sure you're done.
Right before you leave, so right now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the meter company, I'm gonna call Wayne, and just make sure, we're gonna talk about pressure spikes, and right now, that's what I got on my plate, it's all low.
And the end of an old line.
And the end of, on the end of a line.
And if you can actually get four thousand gallons in an hour through a half inch line.
Right, that's, he read, he read.
That's what it showed the first time I looked at it.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of water.
Couldn't even push that much water through that small pipe.
No, I know.
It's a little thing. All right, so that's what I'll look up, and I'll bring back the answer.
I will say, looking at these new meters compared to the old meters, because I thought there was a lot of water flowing back, you looked at it again, it doesn't show four thousand gallons, it shows a four. And that doesn't mean four thousand gallons, and on my meter, it meant four gallons. Because I was washing my truck, and I was just keeping an eye on it, and just wait a meter, the new meters work.
You knew you filled a five gallon tail and not a four thousand gallon?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so you have to really look at the numbers on the meter, the way they are. Because I was, I was kinda.
Yeah, I know the last one. Reading tenths, yeah.
I thought I used a thousand gallons of water to wash my truck, and I used like fifteen gallons.
And you can, can you break down how much of their bill increase from one to the next was consumption versus an increase in the prices? Water and sewer rate increase.
Yes, Bill, you wanna, we wanna see where the increases came from, whether it was due consumption.
How much they were, how much of the four hundred to the six hundred, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, four twenty-five.
Four twenty-five to six hundred was just rate increase.
Yeah, okay, we'll pull some information, bring it back.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Ashley Bruce.
Do you wanna give a rundown of my water bill too, or?
Yes, so Ms. Bruce also feels that her bill from eleven five, twenty nineteen, was too high. I, I again, Ms. Bruce did come in, and we looked over the numbers, and I did deny her request for water credits. At the time, there was no plumber, no plumber had looked at the, at the house, there was no identification of a leak because the plumber didn't come. There was no data to support an error in the billing. We have had, so this is the summer months, we do have in the file that that household does have a swimming pool, and that household did receive a water credit this year. Sewer credit, excuse me, sewer credit, yes.
Okay, but this is. This has to get written in, thirty-eight, handwritten, three.
That's a lot.
That's something. Nothing I can do.
Oh.
It's Steve Cathcart.
It's Steve Cath, it's the Cathcart, yeah.
It's nine eighty-two, back in seventeen, is that the? That, that was an error. That was a date of entry error.
What was that supposed to be?
I don't know what it was supposed to be. So we're looking at, I mean, the highest they had, other than that, was twenty-nine thousand, and then a person.
Forty-six, there was a, forty-six a long time ago.
That, that year, we filled the pool, we didn't apply for a credit.
Bev, is the water credit, will that come off of the consumption number?
Um, not in Nimmerich, no, it just, in Nimmerich, when you do a credit, it puts water base and water sewer in the same category, so if it's a water credit, it'll just come off of whatever is doing water.
Is there ever gonna, actually, a sewer credit, right?
If, if it was a sewer use credit, then it would have come out of sewer. But we never give a credit for more than what the sewer use bill was.
I got a question on eleven fifteen point seventeen. The reading was six sixty-seven and the consumption was nine eighty-two?
No, that was, that was wrong.
That was wrong.
The nine eighty-two, when I run the bills, I run a reverse billing that will show the problems at the top. That billing period, it showed up, so I had to go in and manually enter their usage. So because I did that, it didn't show up in the report.
So has anybody looked at, at this?
We haven't, and normally, I would be like, okay, we had a leak, but our new water bill went down significantly, under three hundred dollars.
Back to, back to.
Yeah, and that's with the new meter. My question is, maybe was human error made with writing down the old meter?
No, it, these, we're very diligent in writing these numbers down. I mean, you can't, you can't discount it, I guess, but this is checked by the water department, then it's checked by Bev, and then as it's going in, as it's going through the system, we look for anomalies.
If it was something, if it was something outrageous, we would notice it.
But when my old water was taken, meter was taken out, I was explained that that number was handwritten. That person is in a dark corner in my basement. Like, that wasn't electronically read.
Is there any way, there's absolutely no way to check it?
Does it have notes on it?
Normally, we try and save the old meters through the next billing period, just in case issues come up. The billing question, I believe, is not this one that just went out, but it was the quarter before. So that meter has already been dismantled because there were no questions regarding that meter by the due date of the bill.
Which there was no question asked, because every time you have.
Everyone has one of those.
When they.
When they do it, yeah.
So the, the date, the, the month, excuse me, the bill that's in question is only a thousand gallons greater than the, the previous billing, so if, summer months, consumption is higher. Whereas if we, if we fill up swimming pools and water consumption would just be high.
Where are you going?
Okay, but.
Where are you, where are you at?
Say that again.
So seven twenty-five nineteen, consumption is twenty-nine.
Which is ten thousand.
Yeah, only ten thousand, yeah, but.
And then.
It's a lot, but if we fill up the swimming pool, it's, it will take them, it will take a lot.
Okay, but we filled our swimming pool from nothing in it back in two thousand fourteen, and the water bill is only seven hundred and forty-four dollars.
That could be a reissue though.
Yeah.
I just don't understand how we filled the pool in July, we paid five hundred and seventy-four, and then the next quarter, we didn't fill the pool at all, and it was eight hundred and sixteen.
So the letter that was sent a few years ago, says the pool will hold about ten thousand gallons, and they would estimate that topping off the pool four or five times throughout the season, they estimate topping off the pool four or five times throughout the season. I could understand if we tossed the pool, the hose into the pool and let it run, I could see using a significant amount of water.
I don't know what letter you're referring to.
Steven Cathart, Cathcart.
Just Cathcart.
Cathcart, I'm sorry. Cathcart, sorry. Oh, 10, this was from 2014.
That was...
1014, 2014.
Yeah, was this one?
It was before I lived in the house.
It must've been for the 46.
So for this, and it wasn't requested, but if it was a pool being filled, the town does give credit, sewer credit. We calculated out the difference of being about 19,000, not 19,000 gallons, at the rate of 1329 would be a $252 credit to the, to the account. And that would be normal for us to do, for the town to give a sewer credit. And it was requested or? It was not requested.
It did not request it because we didn't fill the pool.
Is it, I'm confused, is that, is this what we're talking about, that 10,000 there, between the 29 and 725 and... Yes. 11-15, 11-5? Yep. It concerns on the 11, the bill of 11-5. Right.
What was the difference between the two bills?
Between the, I'm sorry, the two bills of what?
The 725 bill and the 11-5.
Twenty-nine dollars, one is 28.
No, no, price wise, I see.
Between the water bill we just got? So if we had taken off what we owed for the last, the one I'm questioning, it would've been $294.20. We still owe 566 on the, the bill I'm questioning.
There's...
Some of that sewer.
Some of that sewer, so there's an increase in sewer, but are there credits that we can apply? We figured it'd be, you could round it up to 253 dollars. Would be a sewer credit for that. For it.
What's your credit? That would be a credit for, for a sewer.
Not the water bill, which is the big bill, she's not gonna...
That makes it a question, but...
Okay.
What can do to, we can do a credit for the sewer.
How much, no?
What was it, Joe?
$253 even. What's your pleasure, Paul? To give, on the Steven Cathcart bill, a credit on the sewer for 253 dollars. Hold on a second. Discussion, more discussion?
You wanna say how you got there?
Sure, from the, from the sewer, from the, assuming, we're assuming the fill-up from the pool is an extra 10.
Excuse me?
And so we're giving a sewer credit for that.
Which is, which is common practice.
Common practice, yeah.
Because it didn't go into...
Make sure you request it, don't put in sewer.
The next time we're gonna fill your pool...
They, they will come read.
Take a reading report.
No, we don't.
Oh, we don't?
No, we don't.
You read it and the board itself report.
They take a picture of it or write down the numbers before an acture.
Perfect.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
All open favor. Hi. We're gonna give you that credit and if, if there's any other discuss, any other problems that you can add. And how was the old house, that's where I grew up.
It's wonderful.
Yeah, well, it was wonderful in 1960.
Okay, so 253 is coming up?
Fifty-three.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. No, I think you read it wrong. Okay, Castle and Cooney sent your visit.
Well, I'm here on a lot of things, so I'll just go, he told, he promised me five minutes.
On each?
No, total. So I had to write it down.
Let the record show that we're starting right on time.
Alright.
It may not happen again tonight.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the town of Fairhaven for the recent honors that have been bestowed upon me. Man, it's been a humbling experience and I'm very deeply honored. Certainly, visiting the State House for the state with the state address, thank you, Joe, for the kind words that you shared with the governor, and also the dedication in the town report, so, thank you. It's my honor, my pleasure to call Fairhaven my adopted home. So anyway, one of the reasons the governor invited me was because of volunteer service. So tonight I'm gonna share four of the organizations that are dear and, dear, near and dear to my heart and for which I volunteer. First, the Fairhaven Free Library, which has served our community for over 100 years. Some folks might've noticed that the budget did increase this year. The board got a little bit of a shock when we got our workman's compensation bill this year and it was doubled, going from $500 to over $1,000. So we were caught off, a little off guard for that, so we did make some adjustments in our budget. The other increase in cost was salaries, and now with the rate, the raise in minimum wage, we're gonna have to go back in and look at that budget, so. But anyway, you might wanna note that the number of volunteer hours we had at the library this year was 1,785 hours, which averages out about 150 volunteer hours each month. Second is the concerts in the park. We want to thank the town for their generous support in helping the committee cover the cost of the entertainment. We want to continue to work with the select board to secure lighting in the park, not just for the concerts, but as a matter of safety for all the events that take place in the park, which we call the loveliest venue in Vermont. Again, we have over 20 volunteers each week to help make those concerts accessible, and Claire and I are, you know, 50/50 sellers, so it's a fun time.
And we're the best.
We're the best sellers. The Castle Community Center, and I have a little sheet from the Castle Community Center for everyone. And this is just an overview of some of the services that the community center offers. He does. Certainly, transportation is important. 710 rides last year for Fairhaven residents. We offer rides to folks, to our senior citizens, and also if you have a disability, you need to go to the doctor, you need, you need to go to Shaw's, or you need to go to Price Chopper or Walmart. We take folks every Monday. Nutrition, 1,140 senior meals were served, 223 of those went to Fairhaven residents. One of them, I had lunch there today, it was delicious, but it's a great time to socialize, to mingle, and today, I bing-doh. Health and fitness, we have all kinds of health and fitness activities, Tai Chi for arthritis, Tai Chi for diabetes, better balance, we have Bachi in the summer, kayaking clubs, there's just a ton of things available at the senior center. We have continuing education, Danny Roberts, our book historian and genealogy guru, teaches, helps run his genealogy club out there, but we have a ton of different things, the Vermont Humanities just started a book, a book discussion group as well. And we're just a great place, so I hope everyone will support the senior center. And then, let's see, last but not least, Beaverton Concerned. And unfortunately, we did not get our reported in time, so I'm going to be handing that out. But our budget is the same as last year. And for anyone who didn't get a copy of the budget or our annual report, they are available at the town office. Ashley said that they will be available at town meeting as well, and there are copies, of course, at Beaverton Concerned. Our mission is to help our neighbors in need, not with a handout, but by giving them a handup. The food shop supports families suffering from food insufficiency, and we also help those who struggle trying to meet the costs of keeping warm with our food fuel program. Again, volunteers are vital to our work. The thrift shop, the food shop, and many other programs are staffed fully by volunteers. So, and at the Castle Community Center, we have over 100 different volunteers who really mount up the hours as well, so, thank you. Any questions on any of those wonderful institutions?
What are you doing, your spare time?
I watch Hallmark and everybody knows, anybody who knows me knows she watches Hallmark movies. I do get spare time.
Thank you for your shirt.
Thank you very much.
Are, will you, will there be somebody at the town, at the pre-town meeting that kind of do the, the same kind of presentation?
For each of the boards on which I serve, we're trying to look for people, because I can't do it.
Yeah, right. That'd be good, okay, thanks. Any other questions for it to? Can you have the rest of the night out?
No, we have one more thing to talk about. Are we gonna talk about the mural today?
It's, it's on the agenda at 8:35, about.
Okay, well, we'll see. You might go faster.
Can we move that up so you don't have to hang around, or anybody? Tell you what, let's do, let's do five minutes for public comment, then we'll skip down to that. Is that fair enough? Five minutes for public comment. Public one, comment? Okay, we save five minutes. Alright, let's go back, this would be new business, Eric Grant, is what we're talking about.
Joe, you're talking, right?
Sure, so the Vermont Art Council released a grant, I think it was last week, two weeks ago. They put out this, this once a year for communities to apply, so they can do some, some artwork in their town. In your packet, I think Jay has a picture, we printed out a color, a colored picture of one of the ideas the artist had. Seal and I and then a few other folks met on Mon, then Lorraine, met on Monday and they had some different ideas, some ideas of more historical pictures to go on the side, so we sent those to the artist for a rendering as well. With that...
Well, and the grant is for $5,000, the maximum amount of, is $5,000, so. They did, you know, give us two renderings for two different buildings. We, as a committee that met, decided to go with the, and I'll just say it's the Wooden Soldier Building. The other building is the one that has Peck on the side, and so we really wanted to make sure that if we were going to paint something on the Peck building, that Peck is there, because we don't want the Peck to go anywhere, we want that on there in the city.
It's been there for 100 years.
And it's gonna be there for 100, and more, as long as I'm living anyway, so that's, you know, you know, Lorraine and I are both in the Historical Society, and we really wanted to make sure that the mural was really, tells a story about our history. And so some of the different things that we looked at was, one, the slave industry, you know, and the big stick. The other was the...
The dam.
The dam, you know, and the waterfalls. It could be very beautiful, very scenic, because we want really it to be noticed and people to say, wow, that's great. We want people to come to Fairhaven just to see our mural before they come to the concert. And then, the other one was the fair, because the fairies to, you know, get 50 or...
Fairmont?
Well, you know, the, the 50, yeah, the 50,000 people that would come, you know, 30 to 50,000 people and with the horse racing and, and it was a huge, and a lot of people don't know about that, so.
Well, pictures of the Wooden Soldier.
So that's what we wanted to do, we hoped to write the grant for $5,000, and Joe's probably gonna help the board to see if they would be willing to, you know, ask for some money as well. One of the things that Lorraine and I and Judy Sheldon are gonna do is visit with some of the organizations to which we belong, to see if they will write letters of support, even if there would be some financial support for, for the mural. Costs around eight to nine thousand dollars. It has to happen, if you, once you get the grant, it has to start pretty quickly, and it has to be done within a year.
Like the woman on the corner of Ellen and West.
Yewell Street.
So the two buildings are Kevin Durkey's and Michael Morgan's, and Kevin Durkey has offered some money, because the building has to be prepped before they get painted.
I'm just, we're kinda mid-budget, so if, can we, can we work this into the next year's budget? We're about to vote on your budget.
This is a grant. Grant matching money and...
Oh, well, yeah, we do that.
We have money in grants, for matching grants.
And that's what, I wasn't ready for the conversation so quickly. Yeah, so I'm proposing for this, and I'm asking the board if they would be willing to give a $5,000 match to match the art grant to $5,000 for a total of $10,000 for the project.
How much do we have in that account?
There's, there's more than enough.
What's the total cost of the project?
Like $9,800 or something.
Yeah, we did apply for this grant last year in a smaller amount, and we did not get it, so there's, I mean, it's not a given, just because you agreed to give us the money to get the grant.
You need to know what you're gonna grant match.
It does, it does show.
So John, in the, in the account now, there's $99,000 in grant match, some of that is... Yeah, some of it might be accounted for, not full.
We have part of the match for the bridge. If we get the, if we get the grant for the bridge, it's a big, big amount of grant.
Yeah, this is $5,000, even if everything was funded, there would be more than enough money to do the mural.
On the rich motion, that would be, we would like $1,000 to match the grant.
Hold on a second, what?
Pretty art grant.
Any other discussion?
If you, if there's any additional fundraising, does that go up above and beyond, or does it dilute out the town portion? If you, if you, somebody's gonna make another $1,000.
There probably is gonna be some hidden costs.
Okay.
Like, you know, the $9,000 for that thing doesn't include the cost of prepping the building, you know, that was the artist.
That'll call, who's the patent holder, that has to seal.
And then, and also, that's using the drawing that she did, so, you know, whether or not it's gonna be an increased cost from the picture that we sent to the artist or not, but I believe that $10,000 would be a pretty good estimate for the, for the cost of the work, but then again, like you said, there are some other costs, like cleaning the building and other things that are, are in there.
And if it's a historic grant, like we can ask the Historical Society for some money, I mean, historical picture.
Any other questions?
Doesn't have to be an exactly historical, you take a little artistic license with it.
Oh, yes, we want color, we do want color, very much.
Well, but you could, saying, using the old downtown, you could...
Yes.
Artist, have an artist put in a tippel behind it, in the background, or something like that, you know, you can do something.
Or apple tree.
Or apple tree, yeah, whatever you want, it's cool.
But one of the things, the, I guess one of the new buzzwords in, in the grant, art grants is giving it a sense of place. And we really think that sharing our history gives our community a sense of place, because we're pretty historic, historic place, been around a long time. Lot of rich history here. Joe was a little surprised to learn about all the different things.
I imagine why I'm not.
Any other questions? All open favor?
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, back to work. Department head reports.
Been doing, been doing mechanic work, trying to keep up with the roads. We got a load of coal patch today, so we just started doing follow-ups. That's about it. We're just trying to keep everything going and taking care of the roads. Sidewalks, I got a complaint on it yesterday, but we're, we're trying to get them scraped down and get it so we don't have anybody following, so.
Sidewalks are the biggie.
Yeah.
I know it's almost impossible to keep, keep it clear.
And Bud went to the transfer station, so now Nick's in the truck running his route and trying to do the sidewalks too and just, that last one, someone just got behind.
What? Perfectly, where did one go down to the transfer station?
Abby's out.
Questions? Tim? Well, keep that, thank you. I mean, thankless job right this time here.
I did.
But if you're, if you do throw, if you have some coal patch and you can get on Pine Street.
Oh, they're all...
I know, I know.
Up the Stewarts.
I just have to get on Pine Street to come down.
Yeah, they're all, they're all coming.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not anybody's fault, it's just, whatever you can do.
I'd like, I'd like about three days of good drying weather, so.
You'll get, you'll get that in July, maybe.
Yeah.
Freeze drive.
Couple days.
Yeah, freeze drive. Nothing else we're seeing? We will...
Chief?
It's been a steady February, so far we have eight arrests, two DUIs out of that, one wanted person. And we just had a possession on heroin and crack dealing, cocaine arrest from Graves Street over the weekend, a month trespass, where all is gone. Homeland, Homeland Security Grant, I talked about it two weeks ago in the last meeting, that is a no-match grant, so if we were awarded, we would not have to come up with a match. And again, that was for the radials in the cars and then a morph track, the fingerprint lifespan. And we're still plugging the fundraiser hard. We started a jail and bail event today. We got two volunteers, I know Bob volunteers haven't hooked up to them yet, to be poking pokey, to raise some money.
It's kind of unnatural.
The principal and assistant principal came in today, got arrested by the dog, felt some pokey, so.
Well, that's the thing, actually, I told him, like, we're not going to pay, pay to get me out.
Trying to compete with Murphy the Dog, did a $500 bake sale over the weekend. So, if the stakes have gone up, you know, we gotta get Lincoln the one last push for the week and see how we do before the election. That's what I have at the moment.
Questions for the chief?
Am I up?
I think so.
Chief, do you want to talk about the dog?
Oh, yes. So, we got called to Pelkey Avenue, it was for a lift assist. The woman called and said, my dog, it's a, it's a large 150 ton Newfoundland that's right out the back of the police station. And so, we went over there and she said, I think the dog is fed. We get there and the dog pops up, goes a little bit into the house and then down again. So, we actually had to help carry the dog to the car and what we found is the dog actually had a heart attack. She brings the dog to the vet and we got a thank you card in the mail, the dog is alive. So, she's crediting us with helping save the dog's life, just kind of, some positive press that you don't hear about.
Like, very good.
Yeah, I thought it was. So, I don't have anything interesting.
What?
I do a lot of paperwork. At the top of my list and probably most important for this time of year is I finished up the RFP for the paving. I left a copy on the desk for the board to review and Sam, I stuck a copy in your box if you want to let me know what you think. So, that, this, the RFP is for a three-year contract. That's what I think we talked about at the last meeting. If the board wants it to be a shorter term, let me know. But other than that, I think that guy's ready to go.
Have you guys collaborated on it?
I, I got a copy of Rutland's, kind of made edits and now it's sitting in his box.
Oh.
Yeah. It was actually Sam's idea to do the extended year contract, which is, which is a great idea. I talked to the Rutland Town Engineer and he said they've had great success with this.
That makes sense, I mean, I can see, might, might get a little break in price and plus you got consistency that, that part I like.
Yeah. Oh, quickly about tax sales, we did, we have two people that are hopefully going to pay theirs up, but we're, we're moving forward, we're talking tonight about them. We have five, five properties up for tax sale again. Funding for the Adams Street Bridge, we're getting, we're getting a lot closer. I spoke with V-Trans and they seem pretty excited about going in with a funding package of ourselves, V-Trans and the federal government, the EDA. And I spoke with the EDA and they're excited about it too. I'm going to have another meeting with him on Friday if he wants some, some additional information on what, what we're up to on this end. So, more to come on that. I'm optimistic.
What, what exactly are we looking at? Are we looking at the last two-lane bridge, the last, the whole, those engineering studies we had, the $550,000 or something like that?
And I added, because it was, it's...
It's a few years ago, so I'm sure it's been out.
Yeah, I added 10% to that.
Okay.
So, yeah, it would be just, they would put on a prefab concrete deck, refab the, or ref, yeah, refab the, the supports and it would be a, it would be a two-way bridge.
That's included with the water line on the...
That's the whole deal.
And similar line.
That's the whole, yeah. Yeah, I was great. It would be, so it's not free, it would be about a 26% match, which is $147,000, which we have, it's, it's cheaper than 600.
Well, I see, just getting it back open so you've got an extra access out up here if something happens. You've got to do, if something happens with the bridge down here, beyond Main Street.
We have $73,000 so far in that area. Did we add any, I don't even remember, did we add any on the...
It's, funding is cobbled together from a couple of different savings accounts. It's, the no parking signs were up on Washington, I just noticed them last week, I don't know how long they've been there. You know, Sam, do you know how long those, no, I just noticed them.
No parking, where?
In front of the bank by McDonald's.
All the state did the...
Yeah, state stuck them up.
Yeah.
And we'll be starting the, which I'm excited about, we're going to start reaching out to local businesses for the, that state grant that the brewery got last year. We started earlier and I think I've talked about this before, but we're starting earlier and we're going to get some, some applications in, beef them up and see if we can't get some, some local businesses, some extra, some extra economic development cash. I have two, two people that are interested, two local folks, so that's good news. So, Channel 3 was here last, so the mayoral election has gone wild.
We're going to have to have a primary.
So, Channel 3 was here last week and if you saw me on television, you will understand why I got my hair cut before Channel 5 came today. So, Channel 5 was here today and Fox News sent me a request for some information, so we're working with them too.
Yeah, it's...
Is the A-N next or? Today Show is coming. Is there something about Good Morning America though?
I kept saying that, no, the Today Show.
Today Show, yeah.
They'll be here the second, third, and fourth. And I'm hoping they stay in town, they haven't confirmed, but yeah, they're going to be here for three days filming students and the, the actual voting day of voting, interviewing folks, so, yeah, it's, it can't hurt.
It's good publicity.
It's pleasing.
All they're on, Joe.
And that's really all I got for you guys today.
Not bad.
No, not bad.
Questions for the town manager? Moving right along. Personal policy? Yeah, okay.
Table at the back of the...
Let's do that. Let's do that, give you a chance to pitch up. We did the first end pages the other day.
But if you have any...
Well, you have it, we can go back.
Okay, I'll just sort of get through it.
Yep. All right, so, and, okay. Just promises to be the last time we talk about mailbox policy until we, until we take out of the mailbox.
Didn't we, didn't we agree with your assignment?
That's, yeah, I made all the edits that the board suggested last time and, yeah.
Not an assignment, no mailbox policies.
Very second. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. All those are favorable. All right. Those opposed? Thank you. Get your minnows. We are going to purchase a computer for the town clerk.
Yeah, so I need to apologize and I've been bad with my motions. We talked about this and we, the board agreed that we, because the town clerk's computer's no longer connecting to the bank, we're having trouble.
That's really bad.
Yeah, so, the, a few meetings ago, the board agreed, yeah, let's get rid of computers, but we didn't make a motion to take that out of the municipal building capital reserve fund.
And you've got the connection fees on... Wait, just a question. Where you're taking money out?
Yes.
Why is it going to come out of there when in the town clerk's budget, there's $1,750 for equipment? Why wouldn't it come out of the town clerk's budget?
So, this was, we, we were going to make a large purchase of computers after the new year and this budget, this money is budgeted, I guess for next year, so we're kind of stealing it from next year's budgeted funds. Her funds, I don't know what she has allocated for that. It could be voting equipment. I know she does have to pay quite a bit of money to program, yeah, every year, so program.
Well, on election year.
Yeah. I'm just asking a question. I was going through it and I'm just wondering why it was coming out where it was.
Yeah, honestly, Jay, I don't know what she uses that, that technology fund for, but...
Part of it is for the, the digitization of the...
That's true.
Of the land record. So, I think that's where most of that money goes.
You are a moron for that, well.
So, are you proposing you're reimbursing...
Money to spend not more than $1,000 from the municipal building capital reserve for the purpose of purchasing and installing the town clerk's new computer.
Very second.
Second, but can we add that this is, we're going to use the funds from the reserve account and then they'll be reimbursed the next fiscal year from the budget?
Yeah, the, the board approved money for this purchase, but it hasn't arrived yet. So, yes, that money will be reimbursed to the account.
Is that okay?
Yes.
You have the amendment, Larry?
I do.
Thank you.
You seconded them.
He made that.
Everybody understand what we're doing? All those are favorable. All right, all those opposed? Liquor licenses.
Motion to approve first-class liquor license for Jekyll and Hyde, DVA tenacity.
Second. All over favor?
All right.
All opposed?
Motion to approve a third-class liquor license for Jekyll and Hyde, DVA tenacity.
Second.
They had two licenses.
Also a third.
State designation.
Probably wants a beer for it.
I don't know. Could be, I don't know. That's, I'll have to ask.
Yeah.
You have to, but anyways, there's two, so we got a third and a first. All those are favorable.
All right.
All those opposed?
And taxes have been paid on all these properties, so.
Motion to approve an outside consumption permit for Fairhaven Eagles.
Second. All those are favorable. All right, all those opposed?
Just a little word and that, I live right next door to it and you don't hear nothing. If they have anything going on outside of the... I live in the motorcycles.
I, I don't hear anything.
Motion to approve a second-class liquor license for Midway Oil Corporation, DVA Dragon Mobile.
Second. Yeah. All those are favorable. All right. Thank you.
That makes it a lot easier.
You didn't sign this one back.
Oh, that was a very fine issue. Did I tell you?
Yes.
None of these have had any problems, right?
These said they were all, they had, taxes were all paid. Meter replacement fee, first discussion.
Fee would, I probably shouldn't have put fee here. So, we're coming up on a time when it's harder and harder to get access to folks' home to replace their meter. We're still, we're hoping that the board of selection will approve a...
Incentive?
An incentive would be better, yes, an incentive. So, that way folks will feel more, will feel more alive to let us in. I know when we replaced meters last time, I think it was a $50 fee per quarter. That's gone.
If they have a change to the new meter.
If they have a change to the new meter, yeah.
How many do we have left?
It's, I don't have the exact number, John, but it's a little over 200, probably closer to 250.
Slow down the, that's like a little bit.
Yeah, it's, it's harder to get at these, at some folks. So, yeah, I, I put this on as the first discussion, I figured the board would like to have more of an in-depth, but that's kind of where the staff is, that we just, it's harder to get in these homes and it's about time, they thought it's, we think it's about time to kind of take people out.
Is there a process, maybe, where does it fit in the water sewer, is there a place, water sewer ordinance that we could use or is this, will this be something of a special policy? And can we advertise this in mailing, with their mailing?
There was something in the mail last time.
Yes.
Right? When you sent the meters out, bills out, wasn't there a little memo in here about it?
So, it's, it's been a friendly reminder kind of thing. We do have a letter drafted that is a little bit more aggressive saying, we're going to start fining you if you don't let us, let us...
You've got to, you've got to put a date on it.
But we don't have a fine yet to, to put into the letter, so.
We don't have a policy to put into the...
Well, it's, we would use the, the part of the policy that says, users of our water system have, they have to let us gain access upon request. And that might not be verbatim, but that's what...
You gotta put a date on it.
But we don't have a fine yet to, to put into the letter, so we don't have a policy to put into the- Well, it's, we would use the, the part of the policy that says, users of our water system have, they have to let us gain access upon request. And that might not be verbatim, but that's what, if they can't reasonably deny us access to the meter.
Do you think a fifty dollar, fifty dollars per quarter?
Per quarter. Which they're waking me up.
Ruffling some feathers.
Even forty-five, I think.
Probably, forty-five.
And if they have a plan in place, a date, you don't charge it?
If they got a date, I wouldn't think you'd want to charge them.
If they schedule? No, we wouldn't charge them if they scheduled. Yeah, if they scheduled it and the date passed, we wouldn't charge them, because there's a, there's an effort.
It got down probably to the work involved now that, now that everybody's working, man and the husband, just people that-
Man and wife, well, we're having a little pity. They're scheduled, they'll schedule on the weekend, they'll schedule a little later in the day, so the guys are real flexible.
That should be part of the law.
Well, draft the letter, bring it in the next meeting? Sure. You know, we cite whatever we can cite, and is fifty dollars okay with everyone as a ten, as a tenet?
Intention, I don't know. Well, as long as it just brings your attention, I mean, it's not gonna cost anybody if they make the appointment.
No, if they make the appointment, we're not gonna-
And we have to, that's what you're trying to do, is get a point, right? As long as people can set the, I mean, let's face it, if there's two hundred dollars to do it, they're not gonna do it in a week.
Well, that's what I was pretty much-
And also-
Have it be our fault that they get charged.
Even if you do like a two-month period, if that everybody, if you can get everybody scheduled in a two-month period.
Right.
You know, and that'd be almost before the next building goes out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll draft it up and bring it in for the, for the board to review.
Where do we go with that, Bob? Maybe you can go through Green Lantern and Solar?
One or the other. It's gonna be the next one, but it'll make you happy. I know, that's what I'm here for.
Patiently sitting here.
So, so Green Lantern is, is requesting, much like the last gentleman did, a letter signed by the board, making this site in Fairhaven a preferred site.
Where is it?
Uh, exactly two sites. It's, it's two sites, oh, what is this, twenty-two, way up, twenty-two A, north of the highway. There, there was a, yeah.
It's opposite, uh-
Right on the corner. One's opposite, just, just opposite, maybe slightly south opposite of Sheldon Road, and the other one is Brennan Bend, going toward west.
Or is this one?
Yeah.
Across from my place, Jake. They're across from my place. One of them's down that road by Elbow Bay, up by the tent, but the other one is over, oh, we got two A's. The hunting what he used to have for a-
Display lot.
Display lot.
Is the cornfield up there, or is that where it's down?
Yeah. What do the neighbors think?
Huh?
What do the neighbors think? I'm his biggest neighbor, I'm, I'm saying, good deal. I don't think I might be able to speak, to be honest with you.
But all we're, all he wants is a letter like we gave the previous, that we just-
This is not giving permission, it's not a permit.
No, we don't have-
That's what I mean, we don't, we don't have to do a permit, we just-
Letter of support.
A letter of support.
And these are one acre each.
One acre each? I'll make a motion that we do a letter of support. The two parcels will name that are an acre each.
And this is for the veritor, I'm sorry, for the chair of the town, yes. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we trying to tell me something? Says the acting chair. Acting, yeah. There is an election coming up.
So, if you want, if, we can either take a copy tonight, or if you wanna scan it and email it to me tomorrow, it's fine, either way.
I'll just scan it.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You did two letters?
Two or one?
I think for both, there was just one letter.
Well, there were two letters, and one for each.
One, one for each.
Oh, they're it?
Yeah.
I'll, what am I gonna do here? I can, yeah, I can have options. I can stop and, I'll, I'll get it from him at the end of the meeting or something. I'm sorry, I only saw one. But that's my fault.
Well, let's, what's your Twitter address?
We did, we did talk about comparisons.
You're good.
Yeah. We'll get it, we'll get it together. Joe, I'll check in a few more. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Tax sales. Oh, so like we mentioned before, we're, we're still plugging away at the list, we're a little behind. Tonight, we're asking the Board of Selectmen to, wait, I am just not prepared to do that, I apologize. Make the minimum, make the minimum bid on the, on the tax sale properties that are going up for sale on the nineteenth. What do we bid, man? I'm sorry, Bob, it's been a rough day. Okay, so that's the list of properties and the minimum bid we're requesting.
I don't have that.
No, John, I didn't put it in the box, I left it on my desk. So, we're talking Levin Cemetery for ten thousand four hundred and forty-seven, Nine Washington for thirty-nine eighty-seven, um, One Meadow Lane for twenty-four sixty-five, Eleven West Street for thirty-six twenty-six, and One Fifty-Nine North Main for fourteen ninety-six.
What's the, what's the total?
Uh, that's a whole question. They're all separate, but I mean-
Full Wisconsin here, is Bob?
Uh, that was, I didn't mention any, thirty-nine eighty-seven, I believe. Sears is Washington Street.
I'll make a motion, I'll make the minimum bid on the five parcels, that's on the tax sale.
How many of these are you thinking you're gonna actually do? You said you were close on a couple. We might sell one. It's, my, the experiences I've had with both Mr. Blumer and myself is that people tend to come in and pay off their taxes. Nobody wants to lose their home. No, no, that's what I meant, I mean, how many, you, you're confident that people are coming in? Yeah, especially for the one-
We have to do the five, right?
Right.
Because, just in case.
Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Hopefully, we will not be in the real estate business. Thank you. Okay. Parking lots, mailbox policy is, we still haven't talked about capping reserve funds or the discharge permit. We talked about adding street and personnel policy, and Lewis Lane ownership, have you guys had any discussions yet?
I haven't talked to the owner, no.
But he's in Florida, and his son's here, and I think they're gonna, you know, get together when they get back. I saw Bud, I asked him about it, he didn't, he didn't have any recollection of us having taken it, taken it up. And, I mean, we'll wait till there's some, you know, good weather and see what the road looks like and do some testing. I, putting words of the owners out, but I don't think, I don't think they're, I shouldn't say, but I, it seemed like they're willing to talk, so, I mean, we can't take their over unless it's, it's up to ours, bad, state fix, and what, what we want, but, you know, this, at this point, it's kind of, we're gonna continue to scrape it until we, until the end of the year, and then with the end of this plowing season, and then we'll go from there. That's, well, he's good with that.
Yeah, 'cause we just, the thing is, we just gotta make sure that there's decisions made, you know, to take it or not take it before June or July, because they gotta look, if we're not gonna take it over, they gotta make arrangements with the place, Bob.
Yep.
And we just wanna make sure we give them plenty of time.
Right.
If that's the way it ends up going, just let's be fair to everybody.
Yeah.
All right, round table? I got a kind of a strange request from some people, the alley. Is there any chance of making that just a walkway in the wintertime? What's happening is, when you get down through the file, and it's not anybody's fault, I mean, there's just no room there, when they spread the salt and stuff, it's going on the buildings, and it's deteriorating, or bricks, so is there any way we can do it? Either shut the alley off in the wintertime, or just open up for a walkway? Or you just go down through the snowbower?
Sidewalk, well.
Is that a fire lane through there, or not?
I don't know, I mean, that's something we'd have to look at, I mean, this is just something you're talking-
I can, I can tell you that our fire cars probably don't fit through.
I wouldn't think it could, but-
No, because I can't foot, I would just barely.
You know, so I'm just, just something to look at, because you went down and looked at the bricks on both sides. And, and it's really, I mean, all the mortars come in with the bricks, so, you know, everything that, what you call re-faced, or whatever, done, re-pointed, just, it was just, you know, something that brought my attention, I said, I'll bring it to the board, and then we'll start thinking about it. Or, maybe we oughta, maybe we oughta do just a walkway.
And we talked about closing that thing up, and making it just a walkway.
I think it'd be safer, myself.
Especially when you take, for the park crew people, their fire escape is there.
Their fire escape.
And the handicap accessible door opens into the alley.
Maybe we should have just a one meeting, or, like, a hearing at the beginning of a meeting, on the agenda, for all the interested parties, just to talk about it.
Maybe we can just notify the owners.
Yeah.
Say the alley, come in, and, you know, so.
And they have a fire escape upstairs.
Just get them all down.
Down into that alley from your village, right?
We don't wanna put it down, let people walk up and go in.
Well, we don't want that down.
But anyway, that's just, just a suggestion, just something to look at, I just think it might help. And then the other question I got, when does recreation start?
I talked to the rec director on Friday, and she, I'm sorry, Monday, she's coming in on Friday, and they're, they're lining up baseball right now with that.
Because, I'm looking at, this is last year's budget, and our summer, our summer wages are over already. Yeah, there's a thousand, a hundred and twenty-two dollars lower. If we start earlier, I mean, we gotta find money, there's something there. And then, the other one was the recreation supplies, which that would make a difference, you don't get a lot until probably after the first of the year invites.
No, they're gonna buy all the, they buy all their-
It's probably hard.
Little league stuff. So recreation and baseball are different, recreation will spin up after, yeah, after baseball, so you should see Little Bit sitting in baseball, recreation should be just about burnt through.
Yeah, recreation, that's, the recreation is perfect.
Yeah. That, that makes sense.
I just went through this, and I just thought, maybe we should just see when, you know, when all that starts. I have to go ahead for me now.
Okay, got a invitation from the American Legion, cordially invite you to the Four Chaplains Remembrance Service Saturday, February twenty-ninth at two o'clock at Fairhaven, quote, forty-nine.
What, what is it?
It's called the Four Chaplains Remembrance Service, two o'clock, Saturday.
It's Four Chaplains who went down on the boat.
They, they-
Stood there talking in prayer or something.
Yeah, they gave up their, their life best to other people, and they all didn't make it through. But, and it's just a remembrance of those, those people, what, what people do for the other folks. This is Mr. Lulac's last meeting.
Yes, it is.
Well, talking about the pre-Donald meetings.
All pre-Donald meetings, but the last-
Is that, is that at the learning center at the school, or in the gym?
Uh, they actually moved us, John, yes, it's at the learning center, yes.
The gym is being used.
Yeah, there's a, there's a tournament out there. Anyways, thank you for your service, you still will be working as a health officer.
Oh, yeah, I got some big ones to do.
Been around for a long time, and we really appreciate it, John. Sometimes I didn't agree with you.
Well, I didn't agree with you sometimes, neither.
I don't, I never doubted your, your willingness to help the town.
You will say one thing, the heart of the town, you always have the town the hardest, you know, we all got a little upset when it comes. Thank you for your service, John.
There's nobody on my way.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure, sure, it's all wrong.
The court, they're not very far. Expenditure report. Won't be very long, John, sorry.
I have the checkbook already.
Hey, we, we didn't wanna cut your glory, but you don't- Yeah, you can have much.
Checkbook is one million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Motion to pay the general fund warrant, ninety-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, and that includes thirty thousand towards insurance, twenty-eight thousand, nine thirty-seven towards insurance, and fourteen thousand, four fifty for a wastewater stem. That's why that's so high.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Motion to pay the payroll warrant, thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Go for it, John, your last one.
Second. It might turn up. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay. We do have an executive session, right? All right. One thing, though, that isn't in executive session is we should, we should mention that we have summary judgment. Yeah, they left. I didn't wanna blow- Uh, in public or in non-public? It should be, we should probably talk in non-public.
Because, because the sale furthered.
So, we did, the town did receive the summary judgment on the Billowitz versus Town Fairhaven case, which the judge threw the case out, saying that the, the argument, that the case came before the court, too late, two years too late, it was statute limitations ran out, so, yeah. See where that goes, yeah.
Does he have a right to appeal one?
Yeah, there's a thirty-day appeal. Being fair. That's a good line, that's a good start. Anyways, now we can go into executive session.
I want them to go into executive session at whatever time it is here, till eight-thirty, discuss personnel, one VSA, three thirteen, eight thirty.
Very second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. We're going to executive session.